Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call our meeting to order. Let's establish that we have a quorum beginning with a roll call vote. Joe.
Here.
Corby.
Here.
John.
Here.
Meredith.
Here.
Christopher.
Here.
Juan Carlos is here. He's technology-supported right now, and I am here as well, so we do have a quorum. Corby, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. To help ensure that we're centering our board work around our shared values and serving our students, we begin each of our board meetings by reading our district's equity framework and the Ho-Chunk land acknowledgement, which can be found at the top of your agenda. John, would you please read those for us this evening?
Certainly. In the Brona Area School District, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Brona Area School District will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our systems such that some individuals, on the basis of their identities, face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgement of such, the Brona Area School District is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity. And our land acknowledgement is that there are currently 12 tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, with the Ho-Chunk nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you are on the ancestral land of a tribal nation. As we begin our meeting, we honor the land on which we stand.
Thank you. Board, if you could take a look at the remainder of our agenda for this evening. I would take a motion to accept the agenda as written.
I'll move.
Thank you. Joe, Christopher, second. Any further discussion about tonight's agenda? Those in favor of approving the agenda as written signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The agenda has been adopted, so moving along to our superintendent's report. Dr. Clary, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Welcome, everyone, again. If you stayed over from the annual meeting or are new to our space, we want to welcome you to the regular board meeting. We are excited to have, I think, since I made our first presentation into, I don't even, it's too important to call it programming, but I think it's more mindset, belief, and very important work, and that's in the form of restorative practices here in the Brona Area School District. Of our four-person team, we have two members here that will be supporting the presentation. We want to give a shout-out and give honor to Zelan Walsh. Zelan Walsh is our district-wide coordinator for restorative practices and is the lead for this work. And Dr. Hawkins, thank you for helping in today's presentation as well, but we were excited to be able to hear more about restorative practices, their impact on our students and our whole community. So we'll open it up.
So, good evening. Just by way to give further information, this work directly aligns with our strategic framework, specifically value and belonging, as well as O E 10, where we speak specifically about providing a safe and positive climate at a student center. A few months ago, or previously, you all were able to hear from the principal of Stoner Prairie, where she was able to share with you a firsthand account of the work of restorative practices in the building. Last year, we were fortunate enough to bring about a restorative practices coordinator, and so we had one person this year. Zelan Walsh will share with you how our work has expanded, how we're building capacity, and so that work has expanded to bringing on additional staff to help lift up this very important work. So I'm going to pass the baton to Zelan Walsh, and she is going to lead us through this interactive and engaging presentation tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening.
Hello. Yes, yeah.
Do we do a call response?
You are. All right. So I'm before you today to give you an overview of restorative practices and a little experience of what it's like to participate in a restorative circle. How many of you have ever participated in a restorative circle? So then you know what we're going to be doing tonight. Okay. So it won't be a full-blown restorative circle, but just some components, some key components of being in a restorative circle. Restorative circles open with a quote or some type of mindfulness moment, so I chose this quote from a counselor from right here in our district. And this counselor says that restorative practices are not new. In fact, you are likely already using them without realizing it. As you learn more about restorative practices, trust the process, and keep an open mind. Stay curious, ask questions, and always remember to keep students at the center of your work. So as we look at that, I invite you to pick out pieces of that quote to hold in the back of your mind as we go through this presentation. In restorative practices circles, there are also check-ins, and we do check-ins to find out where people are coming in to the circle so that the facilitator and the participants know what to expect from that person. So the check-in that we're going to be using for today is, on a scale of one to five, with one being not-so-bright and five being fantastic, please share how you are feeling this evening. In restorative circles, there's also a talking piece that goes around the circle. It signals equity or voice, and also allows space for people that may get overshadowed because they're more quiet, so we're going to use a talking piece. I know it's not a circle, so I'll start. The facilitator doesn't usually start, but in this case, I'll start. And then after everyone has answered, then would you please hold the talking piece until we check out? Okay. So, on a scale of one to five, I'm a three. It would be a five if I wasn't. Four.
Four.
Five.
Oh.
Five.
I'm a three. Yeah.
I'm a three.
All right, that's tough.
Yep, sure, three.
Four.
I do like the stone, too. Yeah. Three.
Okay. So, for those of you that are fours and fives, please send us some positive ones to bring us up a little bit. And I should have said that that rock is from students from my former district. They had a party where they made talking pieces, and that was getting to me. Talking pieces usually have something to do with the topic and/or participant or facilitator of the circle. Last year, a group of us got an opportunity to participate in a training from IIRP, International Institute of Restorative Practices, and that formed a team, and that team helped to create our restorative practices definition for the district. So I'll read it for you. Restorative practice is a framework grounded in Indigenous wisdom and teachings, embracing the actions we take to build, maintain, and repair relationships. This approach is supported by research affirming that a balance of high accountability and high support creates an equitable environment where everyone feels empowered and brave. Restorative practices represent a way of being, and I'll say that again, it's a way of being, that honors all cultures and identities, ensures every voice is heard, and strengthens meaningful connections within the community. So that is our definition of restorative practices. There's also a continuum. Now, this is a work in process, a work in progress. It says a lot, but what it really says is, on the left-hand side, that we are building relationships, we are getting to know ourselves so that we can get to know other people. We're building relationships, like I said, we are doing that by checking in with each other, we're doing that by icebreakers, circles that are scaffolded, so that when you come into the circle, you feel safe and brave enough to be able to share as much as you would like to share. Toward the right-hand side of the continuum, that's where restorative justice lives. So we need the left-hand side in order to prepare us for the ruptures in relationships that may come. If we don't have the right-hand side of the continuum, if we don't have the getting to know each other, the community building, when it comes to repair harm, there's nothing really to repair because we haven't built it.
So, Zelan, can you just speak a little bit more about, because I think sometimes people take lightly the work in building trust, in spending the time, in building those relationships, and kind of skip over that in the classroom, and skip over that in spaces.
That's the hard work, that's the hard work. That's where we feel vulnerable, and we don't always like that because when you're trained to be an educator, we're not trained or we're not taught to be open and vulnerable with the people in front of us, with the children in front of us, because that's what they are, they are children, in front of us. So this is a mindset shift, and it's a different way of thinking. So you don't always have to be in a circle to be doing restorative practices. Like the quote said, you're probably already doing it and don't know. So some things you can do is just to ask people how they're doing. That's your check-in right there. As a teacher, when you're standing in front of your door and you're welcoming in your students, and you are giving them compliments, and you're asking them about their day, that's building connections. When students eat lunch with their teachers or with educators in the building, that's restorative practices, that's building community. And restorative practices also is not something additional to the plates of other people. It's who you are, so it's how you do everything you do, and that's why it's a mindset shift. So it's not anything additional, it's just how you go about doing the thing that you want to do. Restorative practices, when implemented in schools, have the potential to increase a sense of belonging, and because it does increase a sense of belonging, it cuts down on suspension rates and the amount of time students are suspended. Academic outcomes for all students increase, but especially Black and Latinx students because it allows them to be seen and heard. Reductions in discipline gaps and achievement gaps are seen as well, and student behavior and school safety improves. When I was a student in middle and high school, I needed restorative practices because I was living in the city of Milwaukee, and I went to school in a surrounding suburb in the 220 program. They weren't ready for us, so I never felt a sense of belonging, and I was not an achieving student. So after I was married and had students, had children, I went back to school because I needed to make it better for the kids that looked like me. So I went back to school and became a teacher, and have been an educator for 26 years, and 10 of those years I've spent doing restorative practices because it's the why. It's why I do what I do. And here's the team. Kertrel Robinson, who lives in our audience, is also the coach, the lead coach of our basketball team. And there's me, the district-wide restorative practices coordinator, Mark Shaffford, who is here in high school, who is also a football coach. And then we have a new member, Sylvia Suggs, who is at Smith House. I have been privileged to be able to facilitate, I don't present, I facilitate, that's why this is so hard for me, to facilitate a two-and-a-half-day training, and six schools so far have been scheduled. The first day of training will be thinking about who we are and our biases so that we're ready to make that mindset shift. It's okay that you have biases, but it's not okay. Once you recognize them, you don't do anything about them. We all come with biases, and that's okay. So it's recognizing those things. And then day two will be foundations of restorative practices, and then day three, we pull it all together and we create and facilitate services. And here's the check. So I invite you to share one word or phrase to summarize your thoughts about restorative practices in our district, and we'll send a talking piece back around this.
One word?
One word or phrase?
Keen. Ungrateful?
Necessary.
Empathetic.
It's everything.
Somebody took my word. Appreciative.
My thoughts are friends because I've seen restorative practices here at work. What's said here stays here, but what's learned here leads here because I've seen it spread throughout the community with the students who go into restorative practice. Thank you.
Excited.
Necessary.
I'm grateful. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be doing something that I'm so passionate about. Restorative practices close with a circle, not always, but I try to close with a circle. And this circle, I mean, this quote is coming from Mr. Sean Harris, who is an associate principal here at the high school. And he says, "I think we need more in-depth training in the district around restorative practices, starting with general education on what it is and what it is not. Then provide opportunities for staff to engage in practices that become the foundation for community building and preservation. Restorative justice transcends rupture and repair, and it dovetails nicely into what we hope to accomplish with our equity framework, student agency, and roles. I think there's a strong will to operate from an RP lens where our staff and students like the skill at this stuff. Trying to do something about that lens." What questions do you all have? Or what are your thoughts?
Can I just ask a little clarification on the training that's happening at the school? So when you say six schools, is this all staff at the schools? Is this some, just, yeah, I'm kind of, because right hitting the sense of where we're building this, at what level is this kind of series of training going to be?
Leaders have selected 10 to 15 people to send to the training, and it's done in cohorts because of building community as well.
Yeah.
And so it's important to know the principles and the investment that they're making to have that many people out of their building is a significant investment, and so they're investing, and it's, the time requires the teachers and the staff to totally commit, so it's not something that you can slide in and out of. You're committing those three days, and so our principals have seen, or as you heard, Stoner Prairie, the investment in time yielded great rewards on the backside by committing on the front line. And we're even providing lunch so we can keep them as.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is the unconscious bias training part of this? So you had mentioned, like, if you notice bias but don't do anything about it, that's wrong, but if you notice it, that's okay, it's just what we do with it. So I guess what kind of support do you have for those individuals that own their biases and want to do something about it? Is that an opportunity for them to do this, this bias training, or is there any kind of bias training support, so to speak, to help coach them through working through the biases they might have just grown to have that took decades to make, you know, to train them?
That first day of training, we're building community, and like I said, we are looking at and recognizing our biases and making it okay for them to explore where the biases came from and how they can undo those years of learning, but as of now, there is no additional training for them.
That's my favorite, I don't know. So I want to first thank you, Zelan, thank you, Kertrel, for your work in our schools and just the opportunity to be, you know, as we are modeling our journey of life on learn, that's all of us in this space as well, continuing to learn and grow, I just want to give a shout-out to Zelan, who helped me deepen my understanding and be able to disconnect my articulation and understanding of restorative practices and restorative justice, and as not as synonymous with each other. They often get, and I have previously presented them as synonymous, and so I wanted to make sure to dismantle that flaw, you know, but when she helped me to understand that, you know, because the problem I can put in front of her was restorative justice as kind of an alternative to deep consequences that it can't be used without, that without restorative practices being part of the culture and the community of our system, before you could even think about how restorative justice can be used to, as a kind of a deeper healing or understanding, you can't put one in front of the other. You'll never have restorative justice without restorative practices, which she helped me to understand. So definitely wanted to thank her for this sitting down and helping us all continue to grow as leaders. We're always on a journey together in growing our own practices and understanding, and, you know, I think there was a book I was using, and I was like, I'm not using that one anymore because Zelan's got this, not just the mindset, but her deeper understanding, and that aha moment, it's like, yeah, she's, you know, it's right. And I'm appreciative for the time that she has spent either individually with me or members with our team to help us truly have a deeper understanding of what is needed for this to come to life, because I know, I know, heartfelt, we all want it to be our way of working, but it doesn't, it doesn't just come naturally, it has to come through explicit training and understanding and deepening our work together as a staff so our full community can do it, do the work together. So, again, long ways, and thank you for all your work and like, commitment.
Thank you as well. I think so many staff educators, people I work with in so many facets, want to be able to facilitate this type of work, right? Because the belief is there that building community and relationships is the crux to everything, which is why I chose that word, but how this training appears to give the experiential piece, because I really feel like for me, trying to put this work forward in the things that I do with teaching pre-service teachers, if I haven't experienced it as a participant, it's really hard to try to model and facilitate, and so I appreciate the fact that staff get to be genuinely involved as a participant to then see how that comes into practice. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Thanks for being here.
All right, we'll transition to, oh, chat. Zelan, unless you, unless you want to say, you're good.
Okay.
There's exciting budget stuff coming up there, so.
Up to another awkward transition.
Hey. Hey now.
Feel a good presentation followed up by some short-term borrow. All right, Pete and I are back. I'm going to roll through just the first couple slides and let Pete get into kind of the technical portion of why we're back, back to the board to ask permission, following our involved community vote on the same night. So we do, we're going to need to short-term borrow this year, Pete's going to talk you through that, so we're going to give you a little history and reasoning for why we're doing that. We'll get into kind of the technical portions of where we're going to be at fund balance, and we're going to ask for a vote. We can't do it without your vote. A brief history in terms of the short-term history of our district having to short-term borrow, and we could have gone much further back, but in essence, we have done short-term borrowing historically in our school district. Last year was the first time that we did not have to do it because we built our fund balance up to the point that we did for one fiscal year. We talked about us spending some of our resources this year relative to a land purchase, that's why you're going to hear some technical language from Pete. Throughout the year, we need to think of school district finances different than, I think, how most folks balance a checkbook on a monthly basis, where you might get paid every two weeks, you might get paid weekly, you know the cable bill's coming at a certain time, you know the car payment's due at a certain time, and you kind of ride the wave and balance your budget. That's not the case in schools, it was in district finance, and Pete's going to talk you through that. We have a steady flow of money out the door through payroll and some ebbs and flows when it comes to that. And that's what we're going to have Pete talk to you about tonight, and then we're going to recommend a vote.
Thank you, Jen. Well, I've worked with the folks at PMA. Now, PMA is our financial advising company, and they help us with all of our debt management and some financial advising, and in this case, cash flow. They prepare a cash flow statement for us where they look at our budget, they look at our historical spending, and they try to guesstimate us on what our cash flow needs would be over the course of the year. And as I've worked with them, there was two low points I want to point out that you can see at the top of the slide here. In mid-January 2025, we're going to have about a two-point quorum, two and a half million-dollar shortfall of cash. Then shortfall will actually be a little bit larger next summer. While I say a little bit larger, it'll be quite a bit larger, it'll be just shy of $5 million next August. Now, this is working in, the reason we have this is because of what came up earlier in the budget hearing of the purchase of the land. It's a great opportunity that we were able to get the land, but unfortunately, it's going to affect our cash borrow, but we have a way to work around this right now. So that's where our, that's where our little shortfall is going to be coming from. Now, the way we're going to be borrowing, or the way we're going to be asking to borrow this, is a short-term note. When I say short-term, it means a period of less than a year, or really, it's actually 344 days is what they've said that this is going to be. There's also something out there called a letter of credit. Now, you may recall last year at the board meeting, we did enter into a letter of credit with the Lake Ridge Bank in the event we did need to do any cash flow borrowing. So we took out that little insurance policy last year, and we didn't want to, but boy, I was sure I said half. So now, the short-term notes.
Because sorry to interrupt you, because what happens if we run out, and again, we're estimating audit time next year, we'll have around $25 million at a point in time. Pete, if we ended up in a spot in January and didn't either short-term borrow or have a letter of credit and were $2.5 million in the hole, we could technically bounce checks at payroll. That's really what we're talking about.
So the difference between the short-term note and the letter of credit, though, is the short-term note, they give you all the money at once. You take the money, you put it into your bank account, you start earning interest on it, but you're also paying the interest, and the interest you're paying is going to be a little bit higher than what you're, than what you're receiving of interest. Now, the letter of credit, you only have to pay interest on that when you are actually borrowing from there. So for example, I wouldn't actually, we probably wouldn't need any money until January, so I wouldn't actually have to borrow any money from the local bank until January, but that's going to be a little bit of a higher interest rate, or quite a bit higher interest rate than what we're paying, and we're not going to be making any offsetting revenues for this. So we did a quick analysis of what is better for us and what's, I'm sorry, what's more financially advantageous to the district, and it's going to be the same way we've been doing it over the last few years. On that last slide where it showed the $10 million and $8 million, those, those are all the long-term, I'm sorry, the short-term notes, and it looks like the short-term note is also the better financial opportunity for us this year. Now, it turns out that the way that we can get the short-term out, the most money that we're legally allowed to borrow is $5 million. So by coincidence, that's above where our shortfall is going to be for cash right here, so that's a little, cut it a little closer piece. So, um, so that's a little, cut it a little closer Pete's sanity. Spend a lot of nights staring at the seawater if we're going to be able to make payroll. So what we're going to do at a future time or what I'll be bringing up to you is probably going back into a line of credit agreement with the local bank here too, which of course we're not going to have to pay any money on this until we start borrowing. We have no fee, the, the legal fees of getting that set up and such, but it's going to be a small little bit. But we just want to have that insurance policy like we were saying earlier to cover that.
Can I ask a couple of clarifying questions? So the projected low points, so the low point projected for August at four million nine, that's cumulative including the dip that happened in January. So I don't look at this and say, oh my gosh, that's over seven million. It's okay, because right when you said the five million, so that helps me see that that's over, okay.
Yeah, I think the next chart on the, on the next slide is actually the answers that helps clarify that for you. I'm not peeking it in some detail, but this is essentially what we believe our cash balances will be over the next fiscal year, where you can see that dip in January, we are, we have negative cash flows. That's where Pete needs that short term note, but there is an influx of revenue. Just following that, where all of a sudden we have $13 million of cash in hand because likely you're either getting state aid or you're getting, taxes are coming to us.
Now, we'll, we get large tax payments in January, February and August. Now, a couple of slides prior to this, I had even made a comment or put a note in there to say that we get about 25% of all of our revenue for the year in August 2025. So it will be, 25% of our revenue is actually about a month and a half after the year already ended. So I already had paid everyone. So that's just the delay of how we get our, our tax revenue.
And when you say we, that is true for all districts, that we are not unique. We are not somehow mismanaging funds, that the system that you're talking about of when districts get school payments, it is typical for most and most districts short term borrow. Am I reflecting back things that we've talked about?
It is atypical for a school district to be in a position if they're not short term borrowing. The other things I want to point out too is at the budget hearing, we were talking about a fund balance and fund balance percentage. And that's almost always based off of the amount that you see on June 30th. So June 30th is just one moment in time. So, and also it's reflecting a bunch of accounting accrual entries and all this other stuff that also keeps Pete going a little crazy from time to time. But either way, we're, I just want to point out that our, the balance that we see was 32% around there. That's what it was as of June 30th. And cash flow is also the tool, like when I'm working with PMA, it allows us to manage our, our revenues and to estimate what our revenues are and expenses are going to be. So just as a way that we can ensure that we also have funds available. Finally, I wanted to have this last slide on here too. There's a table on the right and this came directly from PMA. But as we noticed that there actually aren't any negative cash balances on there. And the reason there aren't any negative cash balances on there is this is always showing what balance is at the end of the month. So we have a shortfall in January and we have a shortfall in August. It's right in the middle of the month because we get tax payments on January 20th. And we also get tax payments on August 20th. So if you look at the August slide, way at the very bottom, right there, you can see even the month before it only had a $1.7 million balance in there, but then it became 17 million by the end of August because we think we're going to get about $25 million, $26 million in tax revenue next August. So I just wanted to point, point that out. So sometimes even these numbers here don't even tell the whole story because we do have a dipping negative if we, if we're not looking at all the details.
Because there's a payroll in between, right? Before August 20th, there's a payroll that hits in between that one million and seven.
So I have a question. So basically this is very temporary because if we're borrowing, it might just be for a couple of weeks. And then do we pay or do we, do we not pay the note back immediately?
We do not pay the note back. We would give the proceeds of this sometime in October and we would have to pay it back next late September or early October, whatever. So the amount that we're asking for is the $5 million amount. So I think on October 23rd, he told me it's the day that it gets wired, wired to us. And we would have that the whole time. So it goes right into our bank account. As I said before, we're earning interest on it.
Right, to be paid back.
And then we turn, we pay it back 344 days later. Not sure how it comes up to 344, but.
So a question, excuse me, back on slide 21, just making sure, is a letter of credit and a line of credit the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I feel like I knew that, but. And then when you were talking about the five million, that's the max we can do. And that's going to be the board language that we're going to vote on, but it still has you losing sleep. What would, if you were looking then to also open a letter of credit to have as that cushion, what does that mean in terms of board involvement and discussion, you know, if and when that would be?
We'll be back. Probably be a two slide discussion, asking the board for permission to open up a line of credit. And Pete, Pete will come back with another, I'm guessing.
You have a lot of last year's state board meeting.
Rinse and repeat.
We did that last year, but didn't end up using.
Right, because there was a zero on that slide, yeah.
And as Chad pointed out too, since sometimes we actually end up being, or since we're almost always our revenues are exceeding our expenses, hopefully that $4.9 million would be less. So I won't be to the point of having to go in there. But like I said, that's, since we get to keep going.
I have a question. Can I ask how much, how they determine the rate of the short term note versus how the rates during the line of credit? Is it prime or line of credit plus?
The line of credit last year was prime minus 0.75%. And prime, prime was eight percent, but since the Fed just cut the rate at that point, I'm not sure if everything has dropped since then. Either way, it's about seven percent is what we'd be paying on there. Our PMA folks told me we'd be paying probably close to four percent on, on the, on the big.
So behind the scenes, and this, this would be, we'd spend probably a whole board meeting on it. PMA has a, a large client base that does similar borrowing. And they pool together their client base, the need for a 344 day note. And actually send this out to essentially competitive bid to get the very best rate they can on behalf of all of their clients. So we're essentially a one-off client when Pete meets with, you know, meets with Lake Ridge Bank. That's not the case because we have PMA on our team to give us the best, best value on that note.
Well, regardless, rates going down, this is going to help us anyway, as they go forward.
We do have recommended language unless there's other questions.
What's the timing, January possibly? If there is any to take a note for the line of credit or the note.
Once this is approved, it's go time. We're going to.
Oh, it's go time, yeah, okay.
It'll be, since we're paying interest on the $5 million, the earlier Pete can get it in our account. PMA also manages our cash reserves when we do have liquid money that we're not going to use for any cost. So we have, we have interest income actually built into the budget we just went through. That it's advantageous for us to get that on the books as possible since we're paying the same fee.
But the line of credit will deal with that at a future board meeting in the next couple of months. We're going to take out the line whether we need it or not.
Uh, yes. Which gives us the, the utility to, which gives us the option to convert, we pay nothing until we actually borrow.
Correct.
So it's just there as an option.
Other than a few legal fees of getting it set up, where we have to pay Corals and Crady as a, a turkey's.
Times council for us. Pete, I'll close with a question. How often do you and your team check our cash balance?
Well, the name of our file is our daily cash.
Isn't that the spreadsheet that breaks the internet?
No, this one doesn't have a lot of calculation. It's got some pretty big numbers. But yeah, we have our, our accounting team every day as she logs into the bank. And all of our bank accounts and monitors the, the daily transactions that happen the day before and happened that morning. So therefore we're able to know exactly what all of our cash balances are. It's also a tool that I can use too, if I want to do some internal cash flow projections, even though we have PMA do it. And I can still do it my way too, where I can go ahead and start plugging in salaries or land purchase and see what that ends up doing. So I don't even have to reach out to them. I still like to use them. They're professionals, I'd say. He told me that he's helped 100 school districts with cash flow borrowings before.
All just kind of re-elevates what you shared at our last meeting, Joe, about just all the checks and balances along the way within this system. Okay, all right. And with that, we do move into board action for the meeting. So we do have a recommended board vote to approve the resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed $5 million. Issuance of tax and revenue anticipation promissory notes and participation in the PMA levy and aid anticipation notes program. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as shared?
Some of them.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Juan Carlos. Any further discussion or questions about what was shared by Pete and Chad? All right, all those in favor of approving the resolution as shared signify with aye. Any opposed? Resolution has passed onward. Thank you. Continuing into board action, we are looking to approve and analyze OE2 this evening, the monitoring report for emergency superintendents' session. Dr. Clarity, I'll turn it back to you to offer up some information about OE2.
Yes, thank you. OE2 is probably one of our most cut and dry, uh, operational expectations. But the, it's important in a sense of, it's really designed to make sure that there is always a clear chain of command and it's mostly in the event of any type of emergency or crisis that we are able to have necessary decision-making, uh, critical command posts and all those logistic, logistical pieces put together. And each person knows, knows who's in the next line of succession. This is most relevant in the times if I am at a conference that is, you know, a substantially far away. Then we will move into what we call OE2. That concludes a communication to the next person in line, which is most often Chad, unless Chad's with me. And that information goes to President Murphy to make sure that she knows who the direct contact is for any decisions. And then we do a full line of, of succession that I think goes four, four deep. And so we want to make sure that those on the list carry a district administrator license that allows them to make district administrative level of decisions if needed. So with that, we give an OE, OE 2.1. And that is just a understanding of our organizational chart and a clear list of the succession of, of folks that we would go to in my, in my absence or something or to, to happen where I'm not able to complete the duties of superintendent. Indicator two moves more into our, our, just evidence that we have shared it appropriately across our, our district to our leadership, our executive systems have it, have it in place. If you try to, unless you, we purposely don't keep the critical incident command diagram public. That's why it's in your executive summary, because we, we just don't want that type of insight into our protective systems and, or any ability to dismantle our, our incident command posts because of inside, inside knowledge. So, but it is there for you in the executive summary. And then finally, it's just a twofold, I do a confirmation with the, with the board president that there have no been, no lapses in protocol of reporting OE2 when we move into circumstances to Jen. And that was just completed prior to this meeting on Thursday, the 19th. And then an example email that Chad would send out in the event that I am not in the district for, for any reason. And that is a piece of evidence there. So again, it's not a overly difficult OE2 to put in place, but it is a very important one to make sure we maintain the integrity and the safety of our students and staff here in our primary school district. So we'll close it there.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Clarity and team about what's being shared in OE2? Dr. Clarity, I appreciate really how much I know about where you are and when you are not where you are. So thank you for your transparency and Chad for most often being the person that is the go-to after that.
Besides, besides Sarah, Charlie, Clarity, and Chad Wheezy. You don't worry, I find more than anything you can be.
So members of the board, we have received and we've done a bit of discussion around the superintendent's report for OE2. I'll now accept a motion to approve the report as presented so we can begin any further discussion as to whether or not this OE is in compliance. Is there a motion? Thank you, Christopher. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from John. Any further discussion before we move to a full vote? All those in favor of approving OE2 as in compliance, please signify with aye. Aye, any opposed? OE2 has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. So moving along in our agenda, continuing with just any general board updates. I'd like to share just a reminder about our invitation that was sent to you all for the Greater Dane County School District Governance Consortium gathering. So as we spoke about earlier, in terms of our membership with that organization, there's a few of us that have been involved in meetings and planning. But because we are the host site for the meeting that is on October 8th, we would encourage you all to attend if you're able to. Lori has noticed the meeting, so your presence is certainly encouraged. Aztec will be served at 5:30 PM. We're all very excited about that. And again, the agenda was sent to you. I think it would still be helpful for Lori and all to respond to the invite as that came to you. Any questions from anyone about that evening's agenda?
Quick statement into this space. We've moved, I think while we were developing the consortium to get, you know, kind of processes put in place. So this will be a stark shift in very intentional programming on one item, which is advocacy for state funding. And being able to do that from, not just for our school districts, attempts to continue to advocate, but a full Dane County team coming together with a development of strategies, language and a stark effort to, it's heavily on my mind as you know, to get inquiries into the, um, the, kind of the end of ESSER funding. And it still resonates with me, uh, the way our legislative body chose to use federal funding in as a replacement for what should have been state funding. And, you know, the kind of damage to, to community and to the damage to school funding that took place. And so to prevent such items like that happening again, uh, we feel like this is a strong move for us to come together as a consortium to really advocate for what we believe in. And that's the funding of public education, you know, of our students and the staff that worked so hard to me to develop the skills of our students. So a little passionate about it because, you know, it's, when you see the funds there, we know where it should be going.
And this was something that we talked about with this board, with our referendum as well. Just some of the conversations we've had in this room and for our community to hear about some of the situations that our district finds itself in and districts all over the state is really things that were being dealt by the way that funding is happening from the state level. So I'm excited to be a part of this and to feel that energy to try to work higher than where we are because a lot of the things that we have to grapple with budgetarily at this table certainly stem from places beyond where we are. And so will Aztec. I mean, all of that and Aztec. Oh my gosh, I'm so excited. Anyone else have any general board updates to share this evening? So moving along to public comment, Lori, making sure you didn't miss anything for public comment tonight. Thank you. Taking a look at our superintendent consent agenda, please make sure you've taken a look at what is there. Are there any questions? Hearing none, superintendent's consent agenda is approved as presented and the board's consent agenda. Any questions? Hearing none, the board's consent agenda is also approved. Future agenda items, the meeting we just spoke about is not listed technically on the agenda here, but just our upcoming board meetings, regular board meetings.
I have a question. I have a question.
Yeah.
Are there, is it correct? When I seen, um, no monitoring boards for the seventh and twenty-first? On the, uh, monitoring report schedule?
Correct.
It is.
Yes.
We're tempting to do some.
Are you disappointed?
I was going to be ready.
Yeah, trying to provide some space where we can have more room for discussion at some of our board meetings and a little more monitoring others, so.
If, if there's likelihood of some indicator proposals though.
Okay.
Because whenever we add, we, are we doing multiple indicators? Yes.
So we're trying to get anywhere sharp-ish?
Yes.
Yes. Doesn't that sound like a next thing to do in regular board meeting time? Excellent. All right, well, with that, uh, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So.
Thanks, Juan Carlos. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Corby. All those in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting signify with aye. Aye, any opposed? Thanks, everyone.